Okay, you're recording.
Okay.
You're good to go, Matt.
Thank you, all right. It is 12:30 on Friday, June 5th, 2020, and I hereby call to order this Subcommittee Meeting of the Lebanon Planning Board. Take it away, Rebecca.
Okay, I'm going to read the preamble for publicly open electronic meetings. Let's see. "Good afternoon. Due to the coronavirus pandemic in pursuant to Governor Sununu's Emergency Order 12 issued on March 23rd, 2020, in accordance with Executive Order 2024, this public body is authorized to meet electronically without a quorum physically present in the same location. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting. However, in accordance with Emergency Order 12, we have taken action to provide public access to the meeting by telephone with potential additional access by video, provide public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, and provide a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. For this meeting, Microsoft Teams is being used as the communication platform. Future meetings may provide... or, no, sorry, that was a ped bike one. At this meeting, all members of the committee have the ability to communicate contemporaneously, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen, and if necessary, participate in the meeting by visiting lebanonnh.gov/live and navigating to the pertinent listed meeting. Instructions on how to attend by telephone are provided on this webpage. To assist in the preparation of the meeting minutes and to ensure all participants are aware of who's participating, all speakers are asked to identify themselves and to spell their first and last names before beginning to speak. To improve sound quality and reduce the amount of feedback in the system, please ensure your microphones are muted unless you are asking a question or making a comment. If anyone has a problem with access during the course of the meeting, well, you have my contact information and emails, but you can also call 617-600-8646 or email me at owens@lebanonnh.gov. In the event that there are technical difficulties and we are unable to hold the meeting, it will be adjourned and rescheduled. All votes taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. The meeting will begin by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their name, please state whether there is anyone in the room with you during the meeting, which is required under RSA 91-a. And at this point, we can continue, Matt.
Alrighty, so roll call first?
Yes, you do it.
Yeah. Thanks.
Matt, Matt.
So, Matt Hall is here, and he's alone. Joan?
Joan is here, and she is alone.
Tom?
Tom is here, and he is alone.
And Kathy?
Kathy is here by herself.
Alrighty.
And this is Rebecca Owens, I am here by myself.
And David Brooks, I am here by myself.
Okay.
Alrighty, well Rebecca, I'm guessing you're gonna get us going, yes?
Yes. Before I begin, we just discussed briefly before the meeting officially commenced, but we'll utilize the share screen option because it seemed to work well the last time. But I do encourage you to open the file that I sent by email. It will be the same document so that you can make notes there or maybe another favored method as we go. And at this point, we are still on Section 6.5. There are three sections we have not looked at in that yet. Beyond that, we have not gone back to look at the submittal requirements associated with the amended parts of Section 6.5. I don't think we'll get to that today. But just to give you a heads up of where we're at, and then I think we'll talk a bit more about next steps after we discuss these sections. So, before I share my screen and we dive into all that, are there any questions? Okay, not hearing any. So I'm going to share my screen. David, was there anything you wanted to add?
No, nothing.
Find that.
I am just, so you know, I'm gonna be type, keeping notes for minutes. So mostly my microphone will be off, but I'll jump in if I, if I'm asked.
Okay, and for some reason, that is not showing up just yet, so hold, bear with me for a minute. Why is not showing up? Oh, there it is. Okay. So as you might recall, there's sometimes a little bit of a lag, so I'll wait until you can all say that you see my screen.
Can you make it a little bit bigger, Rebecca?
Yes, let me first get to the heading I wanted to start at.
I can see it.
Okay, I'm going to make it bigger. Not too much bigger. Okay. Now, this is access and traffic. This is an existing section under 6.5. It's just a different bullet number at this point, if you're referring to your planning board binder and the site plan regulations you have there. So the first two pieces are not changed beyond one word. Going down to number three, can you all see that, where it says the hierarchy of different, differing levels of use?
Yes.
So, this is one of those times when there's a concept that may not be familiar. So when we speak about hierarchy, hierarchy goes from the biggest vehicles to the smallest modes of transportation. So like from pedestrians to, you know, emergency access and loading vehicles, and in turn, the facilities have a hierarchy that serve them. So a big access road or loading drive versus a sidewalk. So the idea behind this is that there's a clear hierarchy on a site so that if you place the sidewalks and driveways in certain areas and highlight the sidewalks a certain way, those routes are very clear to pedestrians. They don't, if, someone shouldn't have to look at a whole development and say, "Where do I walk to get to the entrance safely?" The hierarchy should be clear. They shouldn't only see the road, they should also see the pedestrian route that takes them to the entrance if that, that's the mode that they are using. Does that make sense?
Well, I can understand that you want people to see where they're supposed to walk, but I don't necessarily understand the provide interest in a sense of human scale.
Mm-hmm. So, that is, let's see, that is a bit auxiliary, but human interest and sense of scale is, you're not going to need giant landscaping to show where the path is or giant lights. It could be human scale, meaning small items that show the way. Or, it's just a matter of scale, period.
So, this is Matt. I guess my only question is, I mean, I think I agree with the sentiment. My only question, is it necessary for this to be in the regulations?
I, yes, and there's definitely a range of things in here that, in the draft language, that, from maybe things like this versus critical that you should be considering. So that's a good question.
Yeah, I mean, I think my only perspective is, do we, you know, again, I'm not as experienced in this, but do we see a significant scenario where developers aren't doing this? And that's, and that's my only real question, is it necess, is it, I mean, it seems like, it seems a nice suggestion, but again, does it need to be in here?
I guess it is context sensitive to Lebanon. Do you, so, let's see, let's think of, if there are any examples. I have to come back to that one for examples, so.
So Rebecca, another thing that confuses me in this is, it seems to be saying that most of the landscaping in a development would be done along the major routes instead of inside the development. And I'm thinking, it's, it seems more like it would be the opposite, like you would beautify the internal areas and not the highway. I, it's, it's hard because this could be applying to a three-family house or a brand-new hotel, or, I mean, it's really hard to apply this to a wide variety of development.
Okay, so I'm hearing two things. What does it apply to, and is this about beautification? It's actually not about beautification as much as it's about wayfinding and, and providing a quick reference when you look at a site of, "Where do I go?" So, you know, we're used to seeing lines on the pavement or curbs to direct us where to go, but there are other means of doing that, whether it's landscaping or lighting or things like that. In terms of uses, I think it would, maybe this would be a, it does say "should" already, so when it applies, that would probably be required. But for a multi-family, it probably wouldn't, because this is a "should." Does that help at all to think about?
Yeah, Rebecca, this is Tom, and I, and I think I get the gist of why it says, "And sense of human scale." But I'm gonna use an example, car. So if I'm sitting in my car, which is a Prius, it's very low to the ground. When I drive up to an intersection and somebody has planted large bushes at the intersection, I can't look either direction to see where traffic is. Now, if I'm in an SUV, not a problem. But if I'm in a car, in a Prius, I do have a problem. So I'm sensing from this what we're talking about is, as you're walking along a path that leads to wherever a human being needs to walk, whatever is planted there should be at a human scale, so it's not, I'm six feet, almost six feet one. It's not seven feet tall and six feet wide, so I can't see where I'm supposed to go. Is that why we're talking about human scale? Okay.
Right, so on the ideas of wayfinding and visibility, it, not, it directs you to where you need to go, but it also lets you see ahead to where you're going next. So if, in your example of something being really high and obscuring, that would not be human scale. It would, would prevent that visibility of, on that location. It's also simply to, not simply to, but the idea is to show different modes and their paths, not equally, but at least to show them, period. A lot of sites, all you see is the driveway and the parking spaces, and it's just all hard surfacing. So this, again, brings three-dimensionality to it. And it's, it's not just vegetated landscaping, as it, it says in here, furnishings or elements could mean lighting or things like that. Landscape materials can be hard materials. They're not necessarily planted materials. Walls, low, low walls, like you follow a low wall or a boulevard of small landscaping trees, things like that.
So when it says "a street median at drive entrance" that narrows and terminates where it joins with a variety of other access points, can you give an example of that? Is the street median in the main street or in the, on the development site? Where is that?
Yeah, no, that's a good question. So the, the street median would be, like, probably going onto the site. So, so it's saying "at the drive entrance."
So when you drive into Walmart, you know you have to stay at the right side of the median. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, there, there's, let me think about that. There is a median there. I can't visualize it myself right now, but.
Yeah, there, there is one, and yeah, you have to go to the right of it. And, and that one's pretty obvious. Some places like that are less obvious, and you're almost into it when you realize, "Oh, no, 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 I'm driving into the out." You know, and so you quickly hit, you know, go to the right.
So there, they're using the landscaping as part of showing the hierarchy of uses, like where you're going for your vehicle. But you could also do it to help delineate where the entrance to the sidewalk is, either the internal sidewalk or on the road. But, but to Kathy's question about the narrowing, usually an entrance starts off wide, so the median itself, the part that's in between the vehicle lanes, has to be narrow. And that, all it's saying is, it could probably be simpler language or not even included. And a visual would certainly help. Again, I, going back to Matt's point, maybe this is something we don't really see here. It's something you do see in a lot of design guidance and worth considering. We don't wanna force anything that doesn't seem clear or necessary.
This is Matt. Just, just to go back to my point, I mean, I, I guess my only real question is, and this comes to a lot of regulations that we have, Kathy's way more of an expert now than, than any of us probably, but, or actually, or Joan, or, or Tom. Well, everyone, let's just say, everyone has more experience than me. Let's just say that. I just don't know from like a developer's standpoint if this is useful. And if it isn't a requirement, I just don't know. If it isn't something we absolutely want or need, I just don't know if it's, if we wanna add to the, the, the already very heavy amount of paper we have for regulations. That's my only point, just, just to throw out there.
Yeah, I'll, the last thing I'll say is, I'll just read one definition that I've found of what a street hierarchy is. It says, "A street hierarchy prioritizes pedestrians and would rank street users in the following order." So it prioritizes pedestrians. And it says the order is pedestrians, cyclists, transit users, freight transporters, taxi drivers, and private vehicle drivers. So in that way, you're, and it says it's done that way in order to protect the vulnerable street users. So, that, that's the intent behind, behind having a hierarchy of any kind. It's, it's, in a hierarchy, you have some higher uses.
It's so challenging, because if you think of downtown Lebanon around Colburn Park, you can clearly understand why the hierarchy there is for pedestrians, because even when you advertise home for, homes for sale, you say "walk to downtown." I mean, it's, it's a feature. But then when you're talking about 12A and the big box stores, while there is a sidewalk, and we're adding sidewalks to make it possible for people to walk, it really, it's the cars that go in and out of all those entrances that really seem to be top priority and not, I mean, you, you want pedestrians to be safe, but it's not designed primarily for pedestrians, I don't think. So, it's so, that's what I said, it's so difficult when you're trying to make one regulation apply to a wide variety of uses.
Any other thoughts?
This is Joan. This is Joan. And Kathy, Kathy's totally hit on it very well in terms of the park is set for pedestrians, and the park goes back to when we were using horses rather than cars. And so the, the, the park is, things are close together because horses didn't need as much room. I mean, even starting with the road. The road didn't need to be as big because horses were smaller than cars. And then you got off your horse and you immediately walked. You know, there's still those hitching posts on the corner of the, of the green. And then you look at, at West Leb, and West Leb is totally, talk about human scale. It's not human scale, it's car scale. And when I think about the, the plaza that's on the right, I guess it's the Upper Valley Plaza, the one that has coals in it, and that new restaurant that's right next to the interstate, like that, all of them there have really well-defined entrances for cars, plus they have signs like showing where the trucks go, you know, for the deliveries in the back. But none of them have really good, and obvious places where, where pedestrians are supposed to go. And that's a challenge because the scale there is so spread out because it's, it's spread out with all those, with all that parking, with all those parking lots. So, I mean, it's kind of like trying to make that place more pedestrian-friendly is, is almost impossible, because it's not a human scale, it's a car scale. And, and Tom's right too about the, the plantings. You know, if, the, the plantings try to, you know, soften the edges and make it more inviting, but if the plantings get a little too big, you can't, you know, then, then you can't see them from your car. It's kind of funny, because when we're walking, sometimes we're higher up than when we are in our, in our cars. But it's, the other thing, the most important point I wanted to make speaks to whether we need to put it in the regs. And I'm thinking about the, you know, staying away from 12A, which is, you know, kind of a created problem. But looking at newer things that people have done, that developers have done, it seems to me that, that developers are already doing these things. That, that they've already figured out what, what areas they need to make look good and what ways they can make them look good, whether it's, you know, using that restaurant that's, that's right on the corner there, that's at the foot of the, the interstate off-ramp coming from Vermont. I can't remember the name of it.
Yeah, the One Ten.
Right, like, they have little planters and they have umbrellas or canopies, whatever, canvas, whatever they are. I mean, they, they've already figured out what both attracts people to come in and what's also attractive when you see it. Of course, it's always subject to personal taste. But, I mean, we didn't, it seemed to me that we didn't have to tell them to do very much. They came in kind of already knowing what they needed to do to make it be attractive and economically successful. Because I think that, that, I think for developers, those two are becoming more intertwined. And I think there's less, less drive toward, "Make it cheap, make it cheap." What's the cheapest thing we can possibly do? Who cares whether it's ugly or not? I think they've gotten away from that. So I, I'm thinking also that perhaps we don't need to put it in here, that a more general statement is enough. And then during our review, we could say, when we're actually looking at the sign, we could say, "Oh, this is kind of ugly." And, and, and so making, making the wording something like, "The, the hierarchy of different levels should be clear." And then, I mean, I don't know, I, I just kind of feel like, is that not specific enough? Would there be developers that would just say, "No, if I don't have to do it, I'm not gonna do it." I mean, so that, that's the, the rub. How do we, how do we say it to get them to do it without it being like really, really wordy?
And some of these, a lot of the draft requirements you're looking at are somewhat overlapping. So, the ones we've talked about that are new where it requires connectivity, like continuous connectivity through a parking lot for pedestrians, if, if that's really the number-one goal, while the hierarchy can help to highlight that versus just having the facilities, period, because the, the connectivity one only requires you to have that path as a sidewalk or maybe marked pavement through a parking lot from the public road. But the hierarchy helps to highlight it in other ways. But if, in Lebanon, you feel that just having that connectivity is really the most important thing, and you're still achieving that hierarchy or it's voluntarily occurring, maybe put it on the back burner for now. I can do a screen share of a shopping plaza that shows the connectivity. It is really hard to find ones with really good hierarchy, though. So I'd have to look at that a little bit more.
You know, Rebecca, if the half dozen of us are having trouble understanding this as we're putting our heads together, then how is a developer gonna, I mean, I think what we put in there should be clear to anybody who, who wants to know what their requirements are. These sound like, maybe they're good ideas, but very difficult to understand what, what they, what we're intending to mean by them.
And in, when you are not talking about hierarchy that, including pedestrians and bicyclists, it's, it's the same idea behind highways and local collector roads and local neighborhood streets. That's the hierarchy. You have the big traffic-heavy-volume areas and then the lower-traffic, smaller roads. So it's just adding pedestrians and bicyclists to the mix. And maybe that should have been a example right out the gate.
But, oh, let's take that, for example, the hierarchy of differing levels of use. And then imagine that you put in parentheses, highways, public streets, whatever, should be clear in the streetscape design of internal streets and driveways. That doesn't make sense. If you're talking about different streets that these developments come off of, then you're, you're putting a requirement on the streets inside of the development. I, I'm sorry, I'm confused.
Okay. David, you haven't chimed in yet, but I'm hearing from everyone that they don't necessarily, well, from me at least, have the examples necessary or the clarification necessary to continue with this one.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm, I'm listening to the conversation, and I think you're touching, you're sort of touching Joan especially, touched on a, on a key point that if, if there's a, if there's something that's not in the regulations, then your, your ability to enforce anything is very, very limited. The more general you make it, then that can give you flexibility to, to look at different projects in different areas and look at them in different ways. The, the concern there becomes, well, you're interpreting it differently for different projects, and that gets, that can be risky. But if you make it, if you make it too specific, then, then it becomes difficult to apply in certain areas where it, it does make sense around Colburn Park, and it doesn't make sense on 12A, or vice versa, whichever the case might be. I, you know, if the board feels like something, you know, like, more general would give them something to hang your hat on if you see something that is just grossly out of context for, for a site or something, or where the developer would otherwise seem to say, "No, you can't make me do that, I'm not going to," then you may wanna have some language in here that, that allows the board to, to require at least a minimum of whatever it is you're getting at. And again, I guess these comments are more, go beyond this paragraph three that we're talking about.
David and Rebecca, this is Tom. Can I ask, so, quite honestly, I have less problem with this probably than a couple of my colleagues do. I, to me, it makes sense, but then I've served on, you know, outdoor art or cities and that, and so I understand some of the issues that exist that somebody may not be looking at it from an aesthetic standpoint or from another side. I like the hierarchy of different levels of use. Quite honestly, my hierarchy is people who are walking are primarily the source that we wanna have. I don't care if 12A does have big-box stores. You know, I would like to encourage people walking more than we currently do. Is there any place in the regs, though, where we spell out specifically the hierarchies for different types of streets? So for instance, 12A probably does, in reality, have a different hierarchy than a floor use than does, you know, the park downtown. But I'm wondering if that also should be included in some way so that anybody meeting these regs... But I'm wondering if that also should be included in some way so that anybody meeting these regs could see that this pertains to this type of street and it doesn't pertain to another street, but this other hierarchy pertains. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I think it does.
The first sentence isn't so bad. The last sentence is maybe not as good, but it's all that in the middle stuff that's sort of.
So if, if we focus on that first sentence and then as Tom's suggesting, have an actual definition of hierarchy, would that maybe be a, um, way to have that flexibility, but also specificity that David was just trying to, you know, discern the balance between?
Yes, maybe.
So, so let me add one other, let me add one other thing. So we talked, we, in fact, we had the, uh, what is it called? The planning session, David, where we all met. We kind of talked about, uh, the old Lebanon area on 10, on, on Main Street, uh, before it turns into 12A. And we talked about how important it was to be able to create an environment where, you know, perhaps even closing off streets and allowing people to have walking areas or at least putting things that invited people to sit down at benches and to have, uh, various different owners putting out some type of landscaping or, you know, interesting things that provided for a sense more of a, um, an inviting atmosphere for people as opposed to driving cars through it. And I guess where I'm going is that to me, right there in our plans, we talked about the importance of having people visible and out and enjoying the community as opposed to sitting in the cars and driving. Now I'm saying that while we're also in this COVID thing, you all know from the, uh, previous planning meetings that we've had, I have some real issues with the fact that, you know, we're looking at facilities that are enclosed and people are congregated together and what are, what's the future going to be like? So I'm really torn in both ways, but if you look at the current strategic plan, to me, this area makes, makes sense because we're trying to move to a much more humanistic kind of sense of our city as opposed to a mechanical sense of vehicles.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean.
Go ahead David.
I, I, I lost, I, I think I got Tom's point, but I lost whether there was an actual question there or not and how to respond, so.
Sorry David, David, no, it was more of a statement. I think I was standing on my soapbox and said, I've been in too many situations, including with my own son-in-law in Kansas City, where trying to walk with my two grandsons across the street and having cars almost hit us and going home and, and the son-in-law saying, well dad, they're driving cars, what are you expecting? You know, I think we, we have lost the sense of putting the pedestrian as the most important. And so that's why I like the hierarchy and, and having it actually listed so the people can see it.
My only, my only thought on that is that it, as you've already pointed out, there may be differing levels or different hierarchies in different parts of the community. And then you're, now you're, now you're faced with defining that, almost having to define it graphically rather than just a list.
Could we look at the strategic plan and see what the plan's telling us and then write these regulations so that they fit the direction that we want the city to be going? So for instance, I, you know, without looking at this strategic plan right now, we may have always destined 12A to be big box stores and shopping malls and things like that as opposed to, you know, residential districts and that. And that's fine, if, if that's what we've done, then we can put the hierarchy listing of what the hierarchy for that area would be. We could almost do it by zoning areas within the city. These streets that are within the R2 are, you know, this is the hierarchical, uh, listing for those streets that are in this area. That's, that's, you know, maybe I'm getting way, way out from where we need to be. But I guess I'm thinking as we're writing these, we should not just be thinking about today, but we should be thinking about where are we wanting to go tomorrow? And trying to write these so that it's going to make sense as we're trying to fulfill the strategic plan.
Yeah, there are a few points within that, um, Tom, you, the last part you just said especially like, we're not just thinking about what's there today, um, because we're not writing regulations to fit what there's today because we don't want to just see what there is today. The other thing is having a hierarchy, make sure that you're not requiring, say in your hierarchy, the pedestrian is the most important use. You're not requiring the pedestrian to make detours, for example. The idea is, um, in that hierarchy, they have a complete grid on that plaza or other development. And their grid is a complete grid to, um, navigate on. Um, and just one, the, two last things that, what I was mentioning before, like maybe when you're in Kansas City, there were line or pavement markings, but things like that, they get worn off. So the more dimensions you can add to a, um, design, um, by highlighting the hierarchy, whether it's landscaping or walls or things like that, the more assurance you have of visibility of where those different routes for different uses are. Um, and lastly, maybe this concept stays in the site plan rights, um, as amended? Or maybe it's, um, better for subdivision? We still haven't even talked about, you know, things that, um, where, what, what goes. So maybe this would be even better for subdivision design, although a lot of pauses are not subdivisions. So just wanted to throw that out there.
I have a question. This is Joan. I have two questions, um, for once, I'll, I'll do the one for David. David, do you, are, are you finding that, because you guys, you in the planning office, you review projects with the developers before we finally see them for the first time? Are, are you finding that most of the, the developers that come to you are coming with good designs? Or do you feel like you're still having to do a lot of working on them to really nudge them more closer to our regulations and closer to our vision? I, I, I know, I'll just, one other thing, I know that I have sometimes heard it said during meetings that the, the planner said, well, you know, this planning board, they, they are really fussy about lighting or something like that, which tells me that they came in with lighting that was not, that, that you guys thought we would not accept. And so you were able, of course, using the regulations to nudge them to the direction that we would accept. So that's my question is how, how, you know, what direction are they going in? I mean, what level of, of ability are they coming with or attitude?
I'd say they're, they're, they're okay. We definitely nudged them here and there. We nudged them on landscaping. We nudged them on, uh, lighting. More recently, we've nudged them on like bike parking, um, things, things like that. You know, without, without specifying any current applications, we've nudged them on wildlife preservation and things, wildlife corridors. The, just to, to make sure that, and some of that, I would say is because our, our regulations don't fully reflect what I think the board's, um, opinion is. And that's part of why we're doing what we're doing right now, to, to flesh out our regulations to better reflect some of the things that the board wants to see based on recent development, recent opinions, uh, master planning, that best management practices, those kinds of things. Uh, I would say that the regu, the, 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 the applications, when we see them for the first time prior to submission of an application, um, they're not terrible. But we just highlight where we think they could be improved based on where the, where we think the board is going to.
Want them improved.
Want them improved. That's a good way to say it.
So just like a rough draft of a story or something that you're refining?
Yeah, I mean, we're high, we're, we're bringing to their attention, before they submit their plans, things that we think the board would bring to their attention if they just went ahead and submitted.
And it's, and it's, and this is Joan again, it's better if they get it from you before they get to the point where they're making 12 copies of everything.
Absolutely. It saves them time and money if they hear it, you know, the sooner they can hear it and address it if they're going to.
The sooner in the design process, rather at the end of the design process.
Absolutely.
Okay. Now my second question is, I'm looking at, at the regulation, um, and I, and I, um, that's, is, is additional buffers? And it's, uh, it's in the landscaping site plan. And I'm wondering if, if we can use something like that in places where, that would give us the authority to say, this is the place where we think this buffer is not enough. Or this is the place where we think you've not, we, we could change the additional buffers and have it be additional buffers in some places and other places it could be. I mean, I'm not sure how you would title it, but it would basically say something like, um, you know, talking about the, it, it, addressing this middle part that.
Yeah, I, I see what you're saying Joan. It's, um, basically the additional buffers requirement could be complementary to it, but by having a little bit more clarity on where they should be prioritized, then you could, um, have a better tool for telling them where you'd like to see those buffers.
Right.
Rebecca, can you center that page again, please?
Center.
We're just seeing your comments.
Just so the proposed language is in the center.
Sorry, okay.
I have a suggestion and I don't, you know, maybe, maybe this requirement could be written to require an applicant to define the, the hierarchy of different levels for their specific project site.
That's a good.
And how they are addressing it. That takes the, the onus off the board to say, well, in this part of town or on these certain streets, we want it to be this. Let's put it on the applicant to say, who, who are you prioritizing in your site, you know, mobility? And how are you achieving that? Are you putting pedestrians first? Are you putting cars first? Are you putting, you know, something else first?
I would put that.
Maybe that's a way to, to get what you want or get them to at least think about what you, you want them to do. Uh, but put the onus on them as to what they think is most appropriate for their given site. Because again, it's, you know, what's appropriate on Hanover Street might be different than 12A or, or North Main Street or anywhere else.
So you're saying something like define the hierarchy of different levels of use in your streetscape design?
Exactly. The applicant shall define the hierarchy of differing levels and, and provide a, a statement of how they're addressing that or something like, you know, something along that line.
So David, this is Tom. I like that. And the only question I have is suppose somebody defines their hierarchy and none of the board agrees with that hierarchy. Will we have the ability to say, we think you need to look at it in a different way? If there's not an actual regulation that states what the hierarchy should be for that particular area?
Uh, that's a, that's a very good point.
How, we could say, um, define a hierarchy that, um, prioritizes, um, access for the envisioned site users or, um, but that might, that might, you know, not every site's going to be the same site use over time, so it should prioritize pedestrians.
You know, I thought, this is Tom again, I thought of one other thing that might, it might get us to where we need with what you're doing, David, and that is if we make some kind of statement about safety. In other words, they define the hierarchy based on safety. Then they have to define what is safety? Is it safety of turning cars off of a major intersection into their driveway quickly? Is it safety of pedestrians crossing it? Is it safety of, they, they would have to come up with a legitimate reason why they've chosen a hierarchical, uh, listing that they have. Uh, and we could look at it from a safety standpoint to be able to say, well, that's a great one as far as turning the cars quickly off the, uh, off the street, but it impacts the safety of the pedestrians walking. The, so the safety might be the, the leverage that we could use.
I have, I have another suggestion. I have two thoughts. One is that sometimes if, if you, that, that it kind of, going down the, down the path of having them, you know, tell us what it is. We have to, the planning, the board then has to be able to have in our minds other ideas of how it could be better. And I think that the average planning board person doesn't know that, especially when they first begin. And it, and, and it really depends a lot on, on what their background was. If they've had no background in, in planning and streetscapes and, and the, and the vocabulary of planning and planners, then they don't have an idea. That's when you really have to show them something and say, okay, here's something. And they can say, oh, which they always do, oh, it's really good because it's, it's pretty and it'll be an economic boon. And oh, it's wonderful and everybody will want to come here. I mean, you know, they, they kind of slip into their little, their marketing thing rather than just telling us what the, you know, the dimensions and the description of it is. But, um, I'm thinking here along the lines of a checklist. I was, I read that checklist for, one of the things that, um, that Rebecca gave us. I forget what it was, the checklist for.
The TMA checklist.
Pardon me? What was it?
TMA checklist, mobility checklist.
Was that the one that I, that you had and I was reading?
Yes.
And that's kind of what, and, and then that way you, you know, if you had a checklist, then you don't have to focus on safety or beauty or economics. You just have this relatively simple say checklist that says, is this safe? Is it attractive? Is it obvious for, for, for all the different modes of transportation? Cars, vehicles, um, delivery trucks? Is it, um, does it fit the site? Does it fit the neighborhood? A lot of our regulations say those kinds of things. They say it should be the scale of the neighborhood or it should be the, um, historical flavor of the neighborhood. It's sort of check all that apply. That's, that's the thought I'm having.
I like, Joan, I like that thought. The, the, the one thing that we'd have to be careful of is not, you know, unnecessarily or inappropriately interpreting those things differently for different applications. You know, if, if a project or a piece of property is similarly situated to another project or property, you should be interpreting those things in the same way. But I, I tend to like the flexibility of that.
Well, it, it's, it's a way to incorporate all the aspects rather than focusing on just safety or just, you know, anything else. But, but also, um, we have that situation. I mean, we have projects that come that are in a historical area and obviously that applies. But then we have things, uh, you know, like in West Leb where you could say historically, they've been made for the cars, therefore they have to keep being made for the cars. But I think that would be, you know, that's an abuse of we, you know, calling it as historical. I mean, downtown Lebanon is historical because it goes back 50 years, 100 years, 150 years and more. Whereas calling 12A historical, well, those are the two definitions or two, two possible definitions of historical. I mean, to me, that's the only way I see there being confusion. And, and to me, I think, well, common sense tells you, what's historical about 12A? I mean, have anybody dug up arrowheads lately?
Now, now we're, now this is really getting confusing. I keep reading the first sentence, the hierarchy of differing levels of use should be clear. So we want an applicant to come in and clearly define the purpose of movement in their location.
In a way that, um, highlights.
And how it can be safely accomplished.
Right.
And, and then let them do that.
So between what you're saying. So between what you're saying, Kathy, and what David has said, I think, um, it's very similar language and we can recraft that. And what, you know, Tom and Joan have said, been saying with what Joan is saying, it's a more elaborate checklist that could be associated. But at the same time, each requirement, um, is a checklist. If you have safety, comma, um, visibility, comma, da-da-da, that is a checklist. We just need to pick a couple of words that really encompass that, that checklist without being too prescriptive for what David was saying. Because hierarchy really is going to be different depending on what site you're on. It's just a matter that you need to show it and we want to have the developers show it to us.
Well, and if an applicant comes in and says, this is the most important use of this location. And yet the way they designed it doesn't seem adequate for that use, then wouldn't we have a means of saying, well, you said the highest priority of use here was pedestrians, but you know, pedestrians need this, that, and the other.
Yeah, you could either just say hierarchy period, or you could say, show your pedestrian hierarchy plan. Like if you really want to call out pedestrians, you could say, show how pedestrians will use the, um, transportation network on your site.
Joan here? The, 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 I, I, using Kathy's example of the, the, the developer saying, I think this meets the needs. Then how can, what kind of, what do the regulations need to say? So the board can say, yes, but we live here and we are on this board to represent the interests of our community and to follow our regulations and to look at the master plan and see, you know, what, what is our community versus your corporate headquarters in big city somewhere else? So how do, how do we write our regulations so that we, the planning board, have the, the regulation backup that we can say, okay, that's your opinion, but that's, you know, that's, that's not us. That may fly on, in California, but this is not California.
Without necessarily have, you could say acceptable to the planning board. There is similar language in elsewhere in our regulations like that.
Yeah, there's some language in the zoning ordinance about for, for planned unit development, the applicant is supposed to begin by identifying the natural resources on the property. And, and they get the first attempt to sort of specify or spell out which natural resources they believe are most important to preserve. Then they bring that to the board. The board can agree or not agree.
Right.
And sort of send the applicant back to the drawing board or say, no, we, we agree that, you know, those vernal pools are, are most important or whatever. So we, Rebecca and I and Tim will come up with the language to address that, to again, put the onus on the applicant to define it for themselves, but allow for the planning board to have the ability to say, well, we disagree. We think it should be this.
And, and then by vote, I mean, if we've got a, you know, a unanimous vote, that's pretty loud and clear. And if we have a divided vote, well, then they have more ground to stand on because, you know, we're, we, you know, we're half of us thought yes, half of us thought no. And that's the way, that's what is the idea of the voting. You know, you get to poll nine, nine people who live in different parts of the town and, you know, have different backgrounds and have different interests. And if you get a, you know, a solid majority vote, bingo, you, you, you know, you've hit on it. You, you, you know, they've captured it well.
I think that sounds like the way to go. And, and Rebecca and I can work on that offline so that we can move forward today.
Now also, when you come up with that language that makes them sort of show it first and then, you know, meeting safety, aesthetics, economics, blah, you know, blah, 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 current conditions, current highway conditions, then you can, and then subject to Sue, to the board, you could use that phrase over and over and over again in the document. Because there are many, many, many times when that's exactly what we're doing. You know, we're sitting there looking at it in the context because we live here and we, we, you know, we know. And, and then we also have the input of a butters and the neighborhood to fill in more specifics. Oh, that place always freezes. Everybody always has an accident there. You really need to flatten that out or you need to straighten that out. I mean, and we sitting there take that in to account. We're like, oh yeah, you know, yeah, I went by there one time and it was icy. And yeah, every time I went by there, it was icy. And it's just some thoughts.
Okay. Well, um, I've been taking notes while everyone's been speaking. So we'll try to capture that in the minutes and in the edits. So if we're ready for the next one, and you can all see my screen still. The next one is onsite pedestrian facilities. I have to slide my screen over a little for a minute. Hold on. There we go. So onsite pedestrian facilities. This is another aspect of requiring coordinated network. It doesn't say anything about, you know, like the last one, prioritizing pedestrian facilities as part of the hierarchy. This is about what do you do with the pedestrian facilities? So it's first of all, saying provide pedestrian facilities on the site. This is different from when we say provide a sidewalk because the sidewalk is on the, the public way. These are internal facilities on the site. So I just want to make that clear. So if you're going to provide onsite pedestrian facilities, what do they need to, um, have? They need to be convenient. And so have clear paths through the parking lot. You will often see that, um, as we've discussed before, that these parking lots will have really long rows of parking without any breaks between them. In a large parking lot, similar to the last time, when we were looking at the landscaping requirements that break up a parking lot. This convenience requirement requires a walkway to be provided at certain intervals. So it's not just parking that people can actually get between the cars instead of having to walk all the way around, um, an aisle of parking. Does that, that one make sense?
Joan here? I think that it definitely makes sense. And I think that this is kind of, I'm looking at this and I'm thinking this is kind of like, like the checklist idea. You know, the first, the first comment was pedestrians, it has to be clear, you know, where they go and how they go. And then it's saying, here was, here's, here's what that includes. Convenience, blah, 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 internal walk-
Yeah, it's giving a more specific-
So this is like a, sort of like an enhanced checklist.
The only, this, this is Kathy. The only concern that I had reading through this whole section was it's fine eight months out of the year, but during those four winter months when there's snow, then, um, who's going to maintain that pathway? And how wide does it have to be to allow whatever kind of equipment is used to clear snow in that development?
Well, I guess it, um, we don't have in here a requirement saying, once you've built it, once you've, we're requiring you to have it, but we don't say you're required to maintain it. So presumably, um, if we didn't have a requirement to have the walkways, it's just the cars and the, where you drive that are being prioritized for plowing. No one's not going to plow their, their roads. If they provide walkways, we want to hope that they're going to plow it. But this is trying to just have these facilities here in the first place. But I don't know if we want to get into the maintenance side, um, just yet. The, um, dimensions, we somewhat addressed. I don't want to necessarily shift sections right now, but they were addressed in the, um, landscaping requirements where it said, for example, if you have, um, a pedestrian aisle through landscaping, it needs to be at least, I can't remember the number, but, um, four or five feet wide. They're probably not going to have sidewalk plows the way the city does. They may have other, um, ways of achieving that. But this is a requirement that we've seen not just in, you know, Florida, but in similarly wintry communities. I don't know. What are other people's thoughts?
So Rebecca, this is Tom. And I, I actually, I like this very much. I do have one question, which I'll ask at the end. But I don't see any reason that if we require somebody to build it, it shouldn't also be required to maintain it. And I'll give an example. In a lot of places, if you have sidewalks out in front of your place of business, even though it's on city property, you're required to go ahead and shovel the sidewalk that's in front of your business. So I don't see any reason why if we asked somebody who's putting in a new parking lot, like the one over at, uh, TJ Maxx, if they're putting something in like that and they're going to have the aisleways for pedestrians that we're talking about, that they shouldn't have this as much responsibility to maintain those during the winter as they would getting a big snowplow to come through and plow the parking lot, you know?
Yeah.
Instead of letting them climb out of that truck and push a snowblower, you know? So the one question, the one question that I have, but before I again stop talking, that is, does at least one walkway must be provided for every four rows of parking? Or at least, or a maximum spacing of 200 feet? Now, I'm thinking width wise. So it may be something different, but I'm thinking width wise, probably each car is less than 20 feet wide. If you've got four breasts, that means that you've got about 80 feet. How does the 200 feet figure into that? I'm not, I'm not getting that dimension.
How does 200 feet? Let me, in the interest of time, I might not tackle that number just, yeah, I'm trying to visualize that right now. See, at least one walkway may, oops, be provided every four rows of parking. Walkways.
Seems to apply to someplace like the Walmart parking lot.
Right, with these bigger ones. So Tom, just to clarify, you're saying, is that, um, too much?
Uh, no. What I'm, what I'm saying is I don't, I don't quite get it. What I'm thinking is, see, I'm thinking in four rows as being rows being wide. But rows may be, you know, I think of columns being length. So if you have front to back, front to back, front to back, front to back, and you've got four front to backs, maybe that does end up equaling 200 feet because you've got a space in between for driving. But if you're sitting four breasts, this car is sitting next to the next car, that's sitting next to the next car, next to the next car. That's maximum going to be 80 feet. It's not going to be 200 feet. So I, I'm just not sure what the 200 feet refers to.
Part of it is perpendicular, if the rows are perpendicular or parallel to the, where the pedestrians are trying to go to. Okay. I hear someone else asking a question.
I think Kathy, Kathy suggested that this might be a good, um, opportunity for a diagram to define what is intended.
I didn't hear that, but thank you. I agree about that.
This is Joan. About the maintaining it. Two things. I can't imagine, well, you know, well, one, when it's, when it's basically like a development, that's basically private property. And when you, and so any accidents that happen, whether that's due to it, it not being maintained safely, whether it's for the cars or for the pedestrians, I mean, that's, that's a pretty serious offense. So I, I think that here in New England, um, I think that in general, I think that we do a really, really, really good job of keeping our, our sidewalks and whether they're public sidewalks or sidewalks within developments, I think we do a really good job of keeping those clear. I mean, that's the first thing that happens when we've got a snowfall is that bam, the snow people are out. And my dad used to do snow plowing. And sometimes he would come home at two or three in the morning because he was, he was plowing parking lots, et cetera. So that when the workers came in in the morning, they had, they had their spaces all ready to go so that they could come in, boom, start work. And, um, or other times he had to go in early to do that so that when, you know, the workers or the shoppers came, it was safe. And I know, just an interesting aside, that the, that New England teams have had snow, you know, plowing competitions like with teams from like Colorado. And I know that the New England teams always win because we have, our snow lasts a lot longer. We, you know, like it doesn't just melt many times in the winter the way it does in Colorado. And, and they, and so they can be kind of sloppy about how they do it because they wait a few days and the sun will shine and it'll melt. And so we're, we're like really good. I think that our snowplow people can be really, really good and really precise. And it's amazing. And it's scooping it up to, to take it away. And, you know, watching the street plows when they scoop it up off the site, off the sidewalks in the, you know, in like downtown, you know, in the residential areas right around downtown Lebanon. I mean, our, 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 both our public and our private snowplowers are pretty darn good.
Rebecca, are those white lines the pedestrian walkways there?
Yes, they are. And they're, you don't see, this is a large parking lot in a large shopping plaza with many businesses. And the, they have these walkways where my mouse is, can you see my mouse too?
Yes.
Okay. So every four rows, so one row is one line of cars. So one, two, three, four, walkway. One, two, three, four, walkway. So that's when the rows are, um, perpendicular to the building.
And that's far less than 200 feet.
Yes. But say you had, um, like this is probably not 200 feet over here, but in this parking lot, the rows are in the other direction, right? Say you had 10 spaces here and 10 spaces here. A typical space being about 10 feet.
Nine.
Wide, nine, well, nine or 10. That would be almost, that would be about 200 feet. You wouldn't have that without a broken area between them with a walkway. And right here, that doesn't show that. I'm just trying to give you an example of, say, say on, um, the plaza side over here, they had parking facing the other direction and it was a whole line of 20 cars. And then you had a whole line of 20 cars next to it. You wouldn't have it without a break between with a pedestrian walkway to the building. Does that make sense?
Well, what they're doing there is their sidewalks are leading directly to the entrance of the separate stores.
No, well, this is all, um, it, it, but that wasn't necessarily what it was designed as. It was because there was a requirement like this one.
I think it's just coincidence that the ones we happen to be looking at are looking right at the stores.
Well, it's mighty convenient that they did.
Well, it is convenient. Because what we've had, as we've discussed, are other requirements that we've reviewed here where it says you want direct connection to the building entrance. So these go hand in hand. It's, um, not just that it's going to the entrance, but it's also regular intervals of pedestrian walkability.
Yeah. Can, can I make a, a different con, no, observation here? Can you scroll it so that we can see a little bit more of the right development, the right side development that's on the other side of the highway, the multi-lanes? Look at, this is addressing what Kathy was saying. Okay, stop. This is addressing what Kathy was saying before. So what's right in the middle of our screen now, North 19th Ave? Look at the difference between the, the, uh, grass that's on either side of this, the strips. The grass that's on the right side is nicely maintained grass with nice trees. And on the left side, it looks pretty scrubby and there's no trees. And I see there's a pedestrian roadway. And it's like, here's an example where the, where the development of the plaza on the right did make the frontage attractive. They didn't spend elaborate amounts of money to make gardens and waterfalls and, you know, sculptures, but just having the moaned grass and trees versus the other side of the highway, it looks like they didn't do anything to it.
On the left, it doesn't look like it?
Right. It just looks scrubby and-
You're looking at the parking lots. You're looking at the highway.
Yes, yes. Only the, only what's, what is the frontage of the property that's on that avenue. And so there's, but, but on the-
There actually are trees, just to clarify. It's actually a pretty well landscaped.
Look at that. Turn, that is amazing.
Yeah. Okay. But, but still, that, that was, I was trying to point out what Kathy was asking when she said, well, you don't need to do anything that's on the side of the, the major road. And I was thinking, but yeah, you do. But it doesn't have to be, you know, elaborate. You just have to not look like a junkyard.
They gave a nice, nice separation between where the sidewalk is and where the high traffic road is and have the buffer, that, these are bio soils for drainage. and have the buffer, that, these are bio soils for drainage. Um...
And they have left turn lanes, which we no longer have on 12A.
So that's temporary, they, did you see the lab news? That, that's all temporary, it's going to repaint it the same.
I heard, and I hope no one gets killed in the meantime.
I think they said by next week.
10th, I think.
So anyway, does that example help a little bit? And I'll go, I will get back at that 200 feet. But, um, in general, it's so that if you have, um, like this, say you didn't have this right here, imagine, um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, nine or 10 cars. You wouldn't have 18 or 20 cars without a walkway between them. So you had a building right, right here. It's, it's just to make sure that you don't have continuous parking without a way for pedestrians to go through without getting a door or, you know, squeezing through between vehicles.
You know, the other thing that we don't tend to think about is how many young parents have strollers?
Yes.
And older people have walkers and, and, and don't want to have to look ahead and see, is there someone in that car that's going to back up in front of me without seeing me? Um, because when you're in a car, it's hard to see a little stroller coming from behind. So those walkways make sense for younger and older people that, you know, don't just, can't just jump out of the way.
Right, good, good point. Yeah. We're clearly safer when we, when we can walk along the front of the cars and know that those cars are not going to be moving. That if they're moving anyway, it's away from us, it's, you know, backing away from us, yeah.
So are we ready to go to the next one?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, the next one is, um, what else do you do with these internal walkways? They, they need to be continuous, so not, don't just provide it at regular intervals, but they need to not lead to nowhere and they need to be marked clearly and continuously, um, and identified well. So, um, this one is pretty clear cut. It's also one that we have in the, um, new downtown, um, Lebanon downtown district. It's, um, not requiring a lot beyond what, um... I'll, I'll just stop there and let you read it for a minute. Are there any questions about this one?
Can you bump it up just a bit?
Bump up?
Please.
Oops, that's too far probably. There, okay.
No, that's too much.
Uh, we must be seeing very different things.
Now, yeah, well, now we're, mine starts at 200 feet and ends at the second line of crossings.
Oh boy, yeah, that's, that's it, that works, yeah, internal walkways.
That's fine.
Yep.
Any other comments? Okay, I'm going to move on then, um, crossings.
And that, that one also says, and provide traction and facilitate general maintenance and snow removal, hint, hint, hint.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if you've ever slipped on, um, you know, all good intentions, but some paint used to mark walkways is very slick, slick with certain shoes.
Yeah. Well, that's another thing, living here, you, you learn which of your shoes are the safer ones to wear when you know it's been snowing out.
Um, so this next one is about, um, crossing points. So it's one thing to have a continuous, um, path, but at some point you are going to have to go across where vehicles travel. And so what do those areas where the different users, um, intersect, what should that look like? So in a, um, development, for example, between the entrance and the parking area, how do you highlight those crossing areas? And this just gives a variety of strategies. This isn't saying you have to do every single one of them. It's saying what are examples? Maybe it's providing too much detail, but, and you could just say, make it visible, make it a visible crossing. Um, so if you think that's too much detail, I can take that out. Um, if you like having the examples, um...
Can you bump it up a bit Rebecca? Because the part I had a problem with is, um, that section that comes after where you say section 6.5. B.
Yes.
No, keep going up.
Crossings.
No, I can't, you have to go up more, like down or whatever. I can't read the end of that paragraph, see, keep going, keep going.
I think I'm going to make this ribbon smaller.
Okay.
Does that help?
Well, it, it was better a minute ago.
Okay.
I don't need...
I wish I could see what you see, is that better?
Just a little bit more, little, because what we see is, or at least what I see is wheels of a passenger vehicle.
No, that made it worse, I'm sorry.
Rebecca, can you, can you click on the border between the pages and, and get rid of that?
That's what I was just trying to do.
Yeah, just right there, double click.
There you go, now I have to make it bigger again.
Oh, cool.
And I was going to ask on, uh, on relative to the crossings, could you pull up the aerial photograph that you just had?
Oh.
A moment ago?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, I'm going to pull up that other...
Because I didn't see, that would be a ton of crosswalks.
No, so they're there actually, it's not necessarily crosswalks, it's colored pavement markings. So it might be hard for you to see, but these are red areas right between...
On my screen, it looks a little orangey.
Yeah, right. Um, again, aerial photographs are not the best, I could take you down.
But it, but, and, and, and it also, I like the way it, it widens out. And, and wipes out when you're going into the store and then when you're coming out, it narrows down.
Right, so in some areas, um, like, you know, paint wears off or there's snow, that area could be raised. And, um, sometimes the walkway is raised, but it helps to make it more accessible so that once, um, someone in a wheelchair or with a stroller is between the parking lot and the entrance, they're already, um, it, it provides kind of a ramp, um, to get to the entrance. Um, then you'll see where my mouse is, these are also red or orange, so they're not like street crossings, they're internal roadway areas of marked crossings. Does that example help?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, um...
That was the part of the paragraph that I didn't completely understand. Um, can't see it yet.
I just, just only opened it again.
Where it says, "Any raised crossings must meet requirements for drainage and snow removal equipment and should be flush with the height of the adjoining sidewalk." And then here's the part that confuses me, "and at least 10 feet wide to allow the front and rear wheels of a passenger vehicle to be on top of the table at the same time."
I think that's so it doesn't bottom out. So you're not like, a low, a low vehicle is not, um...
Hung up.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of the difference between a speed table and a speed bump.
Yeah, yeah, turns it away from the bump and more to the table.
Yes.
So that, well, you know, the longer that you spread out your height, increase or decrease, the, the, the lower it'll be. It's like flattening the curve.
That won't, um, impede snowplows or get damaged by snowplows or...
If they don't go fast.
Yeah, it would be just like the ones that the police have installed on, on certain roadways. Um, the, the snow plow can raise their, the blade. Um, it just has to be the right height for that. And, you know, any engineer is going to know how to design it for that. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just, I think our snowplows are, are getting more used to having speed tables because they've got them on Dulack Street and they've got them on Maple Street and, and some others. Uh, so I think it's less and less of a problem. It's easier to do a speed table than a speed bump with the plow.
Yeah. And it also helps keep them awake.
Hi all, this is Matt Hall, I just wanted to let everyone know, I have to leave in about five minutes, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Matt, before you go, and if we continue on at all, um, any concluding thoughts from you?
No, uh, no, uh, I'm good right now.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so are we good to go to the next one?
Yes.
Okay, so the next one is, um, a lot of developments, you don't have just one L-shaped building, one single building, but maybe you have a cluster of, um, stores or similar uses. And all it's saying is, provide walkways between those different parts of the development. So instead of, um, having just grass to go across or, or nothing to walk between them, you have to have connectivity between those different, um, entrances.
Yes.
Sounds like there's agreement.
Yeah, look good to me.
Okay, let's, I like the speed we're at now, okay. So we started with the hard one.
That one, that one was.
Put in a speed bump, watch it out.
Um, okay, connectivity, this is, um, a similar idea, um, to the last one. It's saying when you are adjacent to, not just, um, when you're adjacent to another property with similar uses. Again, I know we keep coming back to 12A, but it's relevant. Instead of putting up a fence between them or, you know, even if it's drainage sometimes, that can be a barrier, try to have connections between neighboring sites so that a pedestrian doesn't have to go all of the way back to the main road in order to, um, visit their destinations. They can go between properties with similar uses where appropriate. It's not saying you, you have to, but really, um, should have that, that connectivity.
And not just pedestrians, look at that underpass that was built between Cambridge and J.C. Penney's. That's one of the best improvements that Lebanon saw because you can go all the way from that entrance by the, um, Fish Emporium, wherever that is, across from Shaw's there, all the way down to, um, practically to Home Depot without going back on 12A.
Mm-hmm, that's a good example too.
It's a, it's a wonderful, um, improvement.
And there's flexibility that, um, built in because it says alternatives may be permitted. So a developer if, um, couldn't, if the site was challenging for some reason, could find other ways to address that desire to, um, improve the flow between, um, a neighborhood of similar uses. Um, any questions or other thoughts?
Joan here, I think it's good that it says, um, uh, connect to existing parks and trails or based on city plans for connectivity improvement needs. I think that's good.
Okay.
You know, raises, yes, this, it points, you know, this is not the only document you have to look at. You should look at, at those plans too. Yes.
Okay. Um, moving on, so that, those were the requirements under the, um, onsite pedestrian facilities. So we got through that. This next one, um, access management, this is, um, something recommended in the master plan to, uh, update our regulations to have. Um, it's, it's again similar to the example Kathy was just talking about. Um, instead of having a lot of access points along a main route, um, maybe there are other ways to have flow between sites that are internal roadways. Um, but we don't want to have a lot of curb cuts because that means more turning lanes, more points of conflict potentially. Um, this is also a goal of the New Hampshire Department of Transportation on their roadways. David might have other things to say about this as well.
Uh, no, I think you hit it, the, the fewer points of conflict, the safer it will be, the better traffic will flow.
Right now, we don't have anything like this, I believe.
No, this is the difference between 12A, which has curb cuts all over the place, and 120 where curb cuts are restricted. So that's one of the, uh, that's one of the major differences. If we could require better access management on 12A, uh, it would make that function a lot better and be safer.
One, um, Joan here, one thing that I don't see there, but I'm aware of it when I'm in the 12A, um, when you're, uh, finished shopping, if you're deep into the plaza, you know, like where J.C. Penney is, you don't have trouble getting onto that main exit road. But if you're close to 12A and you try to get into that lane, there are, um, those accesses should be, should be, um, closed off because you only get in when someone who is already in that line decides to let you in. And so what I always do is, I get in my car and I take a look over and I see whether there's any, any line forming. And if there is, I just go back deeper into the plaza so that I know that I can just come out of my little, you know, my, my little, you know, parking lot lane and just get right into the back of, of the cars that are, you know, that are, I forget what they're called, that, you know, they're, they're stockpiling, getting ready to go through the intersection. I forget what that's called.
Stacking.
Yes, and get into the stack. Um, so those first, those first, you know, that you know the ones I'm talking about, they're just, they're too close to the intersection and you can't get in. You just, you just have to wait, 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 you know, it's kind of silly.
Sometimes too many options, um, doesn't mean that any of them's a, a good option instead of trying to focus on having a good design for access in the first place.
All right.
Okay, I'm not hearing anything else, so I'm going to move on. Um, this one I do have an example of, not, um, in case anyone isn't familiar with it, but this one, um, says, "In some cases," so it's not a requirement, but it's asking developers to consider the possibility of a shared street design.
What is that word before shared street?
A wunner. Wunner.
What is that?
It's, um, you'll, if, if, it's increasingly common to see, not, though not necessarily, um, many examples in the United States, but in Europe, a lot of alleyways, for example, are basically wunners. There's not enough room for there to be a separate sidewalk, a separate roadway, a separate bike lane. So everyone just goes slowly and shares that area. Um, I have an example from, um, that I can provide to you if you give me one second.
I think that, that's a, while Rebecca's pulling that up, wunner is a, it's, I believe it's a Dutch word.
Oh, did I say, yeah, yeah, he's right.
And, and you can Google it and it's, it's exactly what Rebecca's saying. It's a shared street where everybody's in the same space.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen again. Um, where did it go? Okay, so this is, um, I'm just going to go to the left and right quickly. There's a road, right? Can you all see this road on my screen? There's a road behind me, regular looking roads and sidewalks. I'm going to keep panning. And then where I'm going to end up is, um, basically a shared street. And if you think about it, our pedestrian mall, um, if you didn't have landscaping down the middle, would be similar to one. Um, in this case, I'm looking at a shared street in Helena, Montana, and it's a little hard to see because of the shadows. But, um, there's actually a parking garage up where my mouse is on the left. And all, meanwhile, there are ice cream shops and other things and people, they just go slowly. People walk down in the middle of this when there isn't, uh, the traffic. But every now and then a car comes in and out of the parking garage or in this case, there's a maintenance vehicle.
Is that a one-way street?
Um, no, it's actually, uh, it might be, is it, it might be two-way, I can't...
It doesn't have, it doesn't have one-way signs at the entrance.
Yeah, I think it's, it's definitely...
That's not planning of those, that makes no sense at all.
What, what part? Well, you see, what happens is, it's not heavily trafficked. So it's not like there's, there's no end to this. You can't, the car can't keep going, it dead-ends. Either you have to go to the parking garage, it's not a cut-through. So it's, it's like having a cul-de-sac where you're going to get a limited amount of traffic because the only traffic going... because the only traffic going there is maintenance vehicles or parking. Yet it still allows that access when needed. Other times, like I said, it's full of street vendors, people on bikes and walking, their benches. Um, it's just a bit more of a, a mixed use of, of modes. So that, that would be, um, an American version of wunner, just based on what I've experienced. And it's a he- heavily, um, it's a very popular area, very safe feeling, um. It's like I said.
The word safe does not come to my mind when I look at that.
What comes to your mind?
I said the word safe does not
Oh.
Come to my mind when I look at that.
Well, there's a big advantage there as Rebecca is saying in that, that it's the only cars that would go on there. Cause it's, I, I don't know, it looks like there's no street parking. So the only cars that are going to turn there are going into the garage. And the only cars coming out are coming from the garage. And you contrast that with the, the walking mall in Burlington, you couldn't do it there because that walking mall spans like three or four blocks. And there's so many people there that come there and walk there, um, that cars, I mean, it's hard enough as it is for cars to go across it. You know, there's this, those streets that go across the walking mall. I mean, they have to wait fairly long for a break and.
And that's what they're calling this, a walking mall. There's the sign.
Yes, but like I said, there's a parking garage.
Makes no sense.
Well, it allows.
How would, how would, how would you change it Kathy? What, what would you?
I would put bollards at the entrance and not let anybody get in, or a gate that only the fire department could unlock or something. That, that, that's just.
But how would, how would you, how would cars get to the parking garage?
Why build a parking garage there?
Well, it might have been the only place they could.
Oh, please, Helena, Mon- Montana, endless sky.
I don't know.
Yeah, the, these are not as, as uncommon as you think Kathy. They're, I mean, there's lots of good examples grafted.
Count my vote negative if anybody proposes it in Lebanon.
All right. Duly noted.
Tom, are you, uh, still there?
Hold on. So, you know, I, I don't see anything wrong with it myself. I think it's perfectly fine. I have seen this type of thing. I'm not sure exactly, uh, which cities that I've seen these in, but, um, you know, I think it's just landscaping of an entryway into, you know, shops and then into a parking garage. So I don't see a problem with it.
I, I.
You know, when I have visions of, remember those terrorists that were driving those trucks down those pedestrian streets and in some of the large cities around the world, uh, last year, where they ju- and where they then had to end up putting big bollards there so they couldn't drive in pedestrian ways. Uh, it was, it was like wholesale slaughter. And that's what it looks like to me, a chance to drive a car really fast and hit every pedestrian there. I just think it's awful.
Okay.
Well, I don't, I don't think that it's that deep. I mean, I, if I'm understanding what Rebecca's saying, it's not a thoroughfare. It's, you know, it's probably maybe a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet deep. So it wouldn't be like anything different.
Like one block.
Somebody, it wouldn't be any different than somebody driving to the parking garage by the Howell Library and the Munoz in Kansas, or in, uh, uh, Hanover and following down, everybody would be on the sidewalk there. I mean, unfortunately, you're gonna have idiots that are like that, no matter where you are, but.
But those are two-way streets. They have lanes in both directions and sidewalks.
But, but they could be, I mean, they, they could be made. You know, like specifically that one that's by the library, that one could be made into one of these. I mean, you do, you have to have other roads nearby where the cars can continue to, to drive. Um, but Kathy, I think you, you need to have a little bit of the, of a news blackout. I think that you're getting, um, a little bit paranoid from all that we're hearing on the news. And, and I say that with humor, but I've had to do that myself. I've had to turn the news off a couple of times because I realized this is really bringing me down. We have to watch for that.
If you don't learn from history, you repeat it. Let's go on.
Okay, um, we're doing well, so.
Yeah, nice people that live here.
I, I just want to check, are we going to 2:30, everyone?
I can.
Okay.
Tom, Kathy?
Hold on Rebecca, this is Tom. I won't be able to.
Pardon me?
I said, this is Tom and I will not be able to continue on to 2:30.
Okay, so, um, do we want to do one more or go into next steps or, or what?
It's up to you, Tom, because you know how much time you have.
Yeah, Tom, when, when you leave, the meeting is over.
Right.
Cause you are our quorum.
I, I am, I am that important to this.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, well, let's try one more.
Okay.
But, but I, I really don't want to go beyond one more, so hopefully it won't be contentious.
Um, so right now, eh, in some, our submittal requirements for, for site plans, it says to show traffic control devices. But showing them on a plan doesn't actually, um, require you to have them. So if you're going to have them, it says to show them. But this one actually requires where appropriate to have certain traffic control devices. And that means like, um, maybe some of the, um, applications you were, you've seen, multifamily housing. If they are also associated with putting in, um, or helping to put in transit stops, they would need to support, um, the improvements of crosswalks or signs or, um, special lighting to help with traffic control. So it says improvements to off-site existing streets. So that's, that's, now we're talking about, um, adjacent to the developments.
So, so Rebecca, how would this differ from what we're talking about with those things that are being developed along, uh, in, over there that impact the streets by Dartmouth Hitchcock.
It, it wouldn't differ, but it would codify it, um, basically. We're, this, these are the site plan regulations, so it's not code by zoning norms, but some of what you're seeing is because staff and the planning board asked for it.
Yes.
But maybe it wasn't in the application. Back to Joan's question to David a little while ago, like, did we have to nudge for it? Um, yes, we had to, to nudge for some things.
So is this like when we say to a developer, we want you to have a blinking, um, signal where you cross from one side of the road to the other?
Yes, and now you have legs to stand on when you say that.
Because my understanding before was, um, sometimes developers ask for a number of waivers. But then in their plan design, they might include one item of a general item that had a number of things waived. And my understanding was if they put it in their plan, even though they had a waiver, they had to build it that way as it, you know, as built had to be as the plan showed. Right?
Um, keep going with that thought.
I remember.
And then this is basically saying, put all this stuff in your plan, but you might not have to do it. Uh, that doesn't make sense to me.
No, it says may include. So basically if it's saying include traffic control, um.
So you may not put anything there then.
That is possible, maybe.
If you didn't want to do anything off-site, you wouldn't put anything there unless the planning board said, look, we want you to do this.
Yes.
So, uh, if a developer read this traffic control section, they should understand that anything that they put there, they're going to have to do.
Or, or if they're not intending to put anything, this is a heads up.
They shouldn't put it there.
You know, we really think something is needed. I think it's good.
The only, the only comment, well, there's already a section 6.8 of the site plan regulations that is sort of generic off-site improvements. And it allows the board to, it says the board may require an applicant to extend or improve street, sidewalk, traffic signalization, water, sanitary sewer, or storm drainage facility serving the site. So it's very.
It lines us that additional buffer thing.
Yeah, it's sort of.
It's an option.
It captures a lot of things that the board, and it, and it allows the board to require those things when the board feels it is necessary and appropriate.
That does or this does?
Uh, 6.8, I would say does. Um, and it, to, to some extent, this, this may be a little bit redundant, especially if this is specific to off-site improvements because 6.8, um, already covers a lot of those off-site improvements.
Okay, then maybe this is too redundant.
I, I don't think we should put things in twice if, if they're fully covered in another section.
David would know better about that.
Does it cover, uh, signals though and warning devices and that? I mean, I can understand it covers sidewalks, but I can't, down below, pardon?
No, 6.8 does specifically reference traffic signalization as well.
Okay.
As long as it's completely covered somewhere else.
Yeah, i- if this proposed section seven, traffic control, is is explicitly limited to off-site
Yes.
improvements, then I would say that, that is already covered by 6.8.
Okay.
And maybe, and maybe, maybe we make a note here to double check 6.8 and see if there's anything here that we want to add to 6.8.
I'll, I can notice that.
Yeah, good, good idea. Yeah.
So I think that's, uh, the last call, the curtain call for Tom. Thank you, um, Tom. Uh, did you want to stay on just for any next steps or you're headed out?
I, I'm gonna have to head out, but, uh, I guess if it's, I'll, uh, I'll vote to adjourn.
Shall I make, shall I make a motion to adjourn?
I have a question before you do that, Joan, and.
Okay.
Uh, it's just a question. If Tom has to go, I'm not, I don't mean to keep him. Um, the next section on bicycle storage and locker room provisions were really troubling for me. So if David and Rebecca could have examples or, you know, like be prepared for that next time.
Okay.
Tom, before you, um, before you sign off, are you good to continue on the, uh, two-week cycle?
I think he's signed out.
Oh, he has, hasn't he?
Yeah.
That means we have to end.
And we're, then we're adjourned.
We're adjourned. Hey.
Thanks, everybody. Have a nice weekend.
Okay, thank you.
You too.
Thank you. But David, do you want to stay on for one second?
Yes, I'll turn off the, uh, recording.